Briefing to order. It is now 6:00 PM, Thursday, January 5th, 2012. With us this evening, to my right is the Vice Speaker BJ Cruz. To my left is Senator Adolfo Palacios, Vice Chair for the Committee. To his left is Senator Manas Silva Tyran, and to her left is Senator Anthony Ada. Thank you for joining us tonight. The purpose for tonight's information briefing is to continue the information briefing which was last held on August 9th, 2011. At that briefing, the Port Authority provided an update on the Port Modernization Program, the status of program funding sources, and efforts to acquire gantry cranes pursuant to Public Law 30-100. The following information was provided regarding the scope of work on the modernization program. There was a mutual agreement reached between the Port Authority, MARAT, and also concurrence by the Port Users Group on August 2011 to undertake the following list of projects: Expansion of the break bulk yard, repairs to the -- structural repairs to F5, construction of a new gate complex, upgrades to the utilities, water, lighting, storm, and power, communication infrastructure upgrades, container yard expansion, and security fencing. We also covered at that information briefing the issues about related to funding as of August 2011. And at that time, the port expressed concern regarding the ability to service the debt that would be incurred for a $54 million loan, given the uncertainty of cargo flow related to the military buildup. It was also reported at the August -- August 9th information briefing that the Protocol Manual, which basically outlines the procedures and the processes for the interaction and coordination between MARAT and the Port Authority when it comes to the implementation of the modernization program, it was indicated at that time that the port was expecting comments from MARAT at around that time in August. And it was also noted that the commencement of projects were pending approval of the Protocol Manual, or the rules of the game. Subsequent developments since the August 2011 information briefing was that the port did facilitate a working session with MARAT and other stakeholders in order to move the project forward. Subsequent to the August work session, the Legislature adopted Resolution 254-31 advocating a balanced approach to the modernization of the port. The balanced approach to port modernization was similarly adopted by the Port Authority Board of Directors, the Governor's Office, the Delegates Office, and the Port Users Group. For tonight's briefing, I had requested that the following information be presented. One, the status of the implementation plan. Two, the status of the Protocol Manual. Three, the status of the funding sources, both USDA loan options and the DOD grant. And lastly, the actions that are planned by the port to move this program forward. We'll go ahead and we'll begin now the information briefing to be presented by the Port Authority of Guam to begin their briefing. So with that, after the briefing, after the presentation, we'll then open up the panel for questions, for a Q and A by the panel. So with that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Ada Chairman Ada. Did you want to, by chance, go, I guess, down the line on your agenda? Did you want us to tackle all four before you started opening up? Or did you want to just go one section at a time, then we Q and A if need be?
No, I think I would like to go ahead and cover the -- cover the four points that have been requested because questions that may come up in the first point may possibly be answered later on in the briefing. So I did ask that the briefing be structured so that it be, you know, between 30 and 45 minutes. And then after that, if you have not already answered questions that are brewing in the minds of the panel, then we'll open it up, then there'll be questions will be asked.
Okay. Well, alongside of me, Mr. Chairman, I have the General Manager Pedro Leon Guerrero and Matthew Smith and Dot Harris from the Port Authority. In addition, I have other fellow Board Directors here, my Vice Chair Mike Benito and Shelley Gibson, a Board Director, and Monsieur Vance here. And then, of course, the other Port Authority management and staff to assist on making the presentation. I'm going to -- as the OAE for the Port Authority of Guam.
The Owner, Agent, Engineer for the Port.
Right. And I'm going to let Matt take the lead on the presentation primarily on the implementation plan at the outset here for the projects we undertake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senators. I'm going to start with an overview of the Port Modernization Plan, and specifically where we currently are in terms of the scope of work. Some of this is, has been stated in the past, but I do want to make sure that we do go over the basic elements of what we have agreed upon with the Maritime Administration in allowing the program to move forward. What's presented here is the overall terminal layout. This was developed in coordination with MARAT based on the currently available funding for the port modernization programming, recognizing that the original modernization required some scaling back due to the limited funding available. So what we have here is the overall site layout. Next slide, please. One of the critical components of the port modernization program, as we all know, is increasing capacity. The first component related to increasing capacity is that of the break bulk area. What you see here is the western portion of the terminal yard hatched in green, and that area currently has Warehouse Number 2 and CFS Building. The demolition of Warehouse 2, which is shown in dark gray at the bottom of that slide, is part of the program in order to expand the break bulk area to help facilitate some of the first part of the cargo that will be seen as the buildup starts to ramp up, which is non-containerized cargo. Associated with that, there'll be some reconfiguration of fencing and additional lighting to ensure safe operations in the break bulk area. Next slide, please. The second major component of the port modernization, again, addressing the capacity issues of the actual yard, is preparing the yard to be a hybrid operation where either a wheel or a stack configuration can be undertaken depending upon the cargo throughputs that are needed at any particular time. In order to accommodate that, the -- there's going to be some replacement of the existing high-mass lightings currently underway with a DHS grant. I do not.
Sure.
Yep. So as part of, one of the current programs underway right now with using DHS funds that were made available to the port is the replacement of some of the high-mass lighting. There is existing lighting in the yard, providing safe lighting at different operating times of the day. Those high-mass poles will be replaced over the next year as part of the program. Also, throughout the entire terminal, there are existing water, power, fire suppression systems, security systems. Those systems, as part of the modernization, will be upgraded as needed depending upon where you are in the terminal. The port will be working on a significant security infrastructure improvement project, utilizing, again, DHS, separate DHS grants that have been made available. And that will allow the port to move forward with providing sufficient data capacity to provide for additional cameras, different terminal operating systems, gate operating systems, all the technology needed to help increase the capacity throughout the terminal. And just to review, what you see here is a configuration for the main terminal that would allow for the maximum capacity should a wheeled operation not be able to be accommodated at a particular moment. This would, this arrangement shown here is the worst-case stacked configuration. The hope, it's a combination stacked and chassis slots. So this would provide the best compromise for both the users and the port to ensure that they can meet the demands that will be coming forward. Next slide, please. One of the other critical components that we have reconfigured and reduced in size and scope within the program funding is the new gate. The new gate complex is a more optimized configuration. What this essentially does, rather than coming out of the port as it currently is with a right-hand turn to get to Route 1, we have kind of a merging traffic. As the trucks come out, they'll merge onto Route 11 in a better fashion. Similarly, they'll come in turning into this operation and have more capacity to stack trucks as they're waiting rather than out on Route 11, therefore hopefully reducing the traffic on Route 11, allowing for traffic to continue westbound to other facilities such as F3, Fuel Piers, Mobile, TriStar. Next slide, please. As I stated earlier, we have worked very closely with the Maritime Administration and their PMT, once it was understood that a reduction in the scope of the program was required due to funding changes. As part of that, we had developed the previous three slides, as you saw, in terms of a reduced footprint for the modernization, looking at all of the systems, the most critical systems, and making sure that all of the critical components of the modernization were addressed. In October 6th, 2011, as indicated on the slide, MARAT indicated that they were looking at a different approach to the modernization, and primarily looking at the waterfront vulnerability. And associated with that, they made a determination that they were going to conduct further studies, in-water studies, geotechnical assessments, and seismic risk assessments. This was somewhat contrary to what we had all developed and agreed upon in the August scope of work, and has set us back a little bit from allowing the program to move forward. And we're still trying to gather what information, or trying to understand what MARAT is looking to analyze in each one of these different assessments. And we'll go through in a couple slides ahead some of the indicated schedules for those different assessments related to the waterfront vulnerability. Next slide, please. As indicated by the Senator, subsequent to our redevelopment of the scope of work, a call for a more balanced program approach to ensure that we aren't just putting in, for example, a brand-new bulkhead and ignoring the needs for the upland improvements. Everyone recognized that there needed to be a balanced approach to the modernization. And what we mean by balanced approach is looking at the waterfront, looking at the uplands, and looking at the infrastructure throughout the facility to ensure each one of the components addressed within the limited funds available will provide us a solution that can handle the cargo demands that we anticipate seeing now. We all understand that the cargo demands have changed a lot over the times, and certain information hasn't been available. But we have enough information to look at what are some scenarios in terms of capacity that we can use as part of this balanced approach. So presented here is the timeline of this balanced approach initiative, leading to the legislation passed on November 8th for this balanced approach to the modernization. I'm not going to go through each one of these dates specifically, but currently, we have a collection of these letters of support for this balanced approach that have been sent to MARAT, and to this date, we have not received a response from MARAT on this balanced approach philosophy. Next slide, please. This is, this slide is going back in reference to what I talked about earlier on the October 6th slide, which was Page 6. This is talking about some of the indicated timelines for the Maritime Administration and their PMT to complete some of the activities that they have indicated will be required to deal with environmental documentation, waterfront vulnerability assessments, et cetera. So I'll go through some of these, they are important dates. The environmental assessment, which is required for any project, this environmental assessment with the lead agency is the Maritime Administration. The draft environmental assessment was provided to the Maritime Administration based on an uplands program in June, on June 5th of 2011. Comments were not received, and on November 17th, 2011, the Maritime Administration indicated to the Port Authority that they would be completing the environmental assessment using their PMT. Associated with that, and associated with any environmental assessment, is prior to actually finalizing the document, an understood scope of work, any complete scope of work must be part of that document. And at this time, since we don't know what scope of work Maritime Administration is going to be proceeding with, the timelines associated with what they provided us for completing the EA are somewhat unknown, but what we have been told is that it will take approximately seven months to complete the environmental assessment. Intertwined with that is the timeline that MARAT has indicated to complete those other assessments as indicated earlier, which include the geotechnical investigations, seismic investigations, looking at the waterfront vulnerability. And as I said, they need to complete those assessments, and if they're going to change or revise the scope of work, that would have to feed into their environmental assessment, which they intend to complete by August 2012. In December of 2011, the Maritime Administration gave a notice to proceed to their PMT to bring on a geotechnical firm and a hazard risk specialist to look at the hazardous assessment of the bulkhead. They anticipated that the risk assessment and the geotechnical investigation would be completed in February 2012. In addition to that, they, the information obtained from the geotechnical investigations as well as the risk assessment would go into a final assessment of the war facilities. Not a final design, but an assessment of their vulnerabilities, then determining a potential change in scope or what types of repairs or modifications would be required based on that assessment. They anticipate having that completed by March of 2012. That would then subsequently lead into the completion of the environmental assessment and subsequent procurement for construction or other design services related to that outcome. And they anticipate that the completion of that environmental assessment will be in August 2012, pending agreement from the port. Next slide, please. This is now going into the second item on the agenda, which is the Protocol Manual. As the Senator stated earlier, the Protocol Manual is meant to be the handbook or guide for how the entire team interacts on this program. And the entire team encompasses everyone from the Government of Guam to the Legislature to the Port Authority to the Owner's Agent Engineer, Maritime Administration, and their PMT to help understand. I should also state also DOD and USDA, as they are stakeholders financially in the program. So the guide to this manual was to develop a written structure that everyone can follow, that everyone can understand, that everyone can understand point of contact, and who's responsible for what aspects, and to really create an understanding of how the team should function as a team for the duration. It was meant to be a living document that would, you know, be changed as needed and agreed upon by all stakeholders throughout the duration. Next slide, please. So the Protocol Manual has had kind of a long duration in its, when it's been created. The draft Protocol Manual was submitted in November 2010. That manual was presented in draft form, was approved, reviewed and approved by USDA and ANZ, and was submitted to MARAT for their comments and review.
Yeah, we finally got that thing dislodged out of them now. Since September, we've been waiting for them to get it back. It's my understanding that they're just running it through their legal traps right now. But during the work sessions that Edilawa conducted chairing this to move everything forward, I think for the most part, we had tremendous cooperation in that regard when we finally did get everybody seated at the table to address all the provisions of the Protocol Manual. But as of September --
But as of today.
As of today.
It's still a work in progress, and we don't have a completed Protocol Manual.
As of today, we finished our part.
Right.
They sat down and they said they finished their part. The only thing that they're waiting for is having final legal review, is my understanding.
Next slide, please. This next slide brings us to our third agenda item, which is related to the funding of the program. The first table here is showing the funds that have been deposited or under the control of the Maritime Administration. They have not all been deposited into the Port Enterprise Fund, but they all have been used for the port modernization program. In July 2008, the port was awarded $100 million, $100,000 in grant money, which the port provided to the Maritime Administration for assistance with administrative costs associated with starting this partnership for travel and for the cost of their team participating in the program. An additional $1 million from DOI was also awarded in 2008. Now, the intent of that $1 million was to allow the Maritime Administration to go out for procurement for the services of a PMT to help bring on that side of the team to help move the program forward. Additionally, on July 28th of 2009, the port was awarded $2 million in matching funds to $2.3 million from the port. The $2 million was controlled by the Maritime Administration, but it was funds used for the port and the owner's agent to help develop the master plan into the design drawings that we would use for the modernization. In September of 2010, the Department of Defense then also awarded the $50 million grant to the Port Authority or to the Port Enterprise Fund to help move the program forward. So the total of the funds made available for the port modernization program controlled by MARAT is $53.1 million. Associated with each one of these different awards, the Maritime Administration does have their administration fee, which is 3% on their grants. As of March 2010, there's a breakdown here of the three main grants, and again, this is from March 2010, is the last update we've received. They had spent $61,000 of the first $100,000. They had spent approximately $55,000 of the $60,000 fee. Now, that's a 3% fee on the $2 million that they had spent, roughly $55 million. In addition, they, their 3% fee on the $50 million, which is 1.5. At this date, we do not know how much they have spent or what the remaining balance is on those administrative fees. The port has, on numerous occasions, requested for the quarterly expense reports. The quarterly expense reports are required in the MOU between the Government of Guam and the Maritime Administration. There are some dates here where formal letters were sent to the Maritime Administration requesting that information. And in addition, at all of our face-to-face meetings with the Maritime Administration, as well as in subsequent emails from February, the port has requested this information from them on multiple occasions. And to this date, we have not seen any updates after March of 2010. So that, you know, those numbers are a little bit unknown at this time as to where they stand. Next slide, please. USDA, as we all are aware, has provided or obligated quite a bit in loans to be made available to the port modernization program, as well as for the acquisition of gantry cranes. The first loan, which is the $42 million community facility loans, or direct guarantee loan, this loan is intended for the purchase of the gantry cranes, and we'll touch on that in one of the next slides in terms of the status of where we are. On December 20th of 2011, the port did request of USDA an extension of this loan to close on this loan, and the date for that being March 31st, 2012. In December 30th of 2011, the current deadline was, that was the current deadline for the port to finalize this loan. As again, I will go into the status of the crane acquisition. The other loans that have been made available are two $25 million loans, one a direct loan with a bank in Guam, and a second $25 million guaranteed loan from USDA directly. Those loans were approved in 2010, and in November 2011, PAG submitted an updated financial information related to the tariff rates, including the 3.9% increase in tariffs proposed to the PSC for approval. Next slide, please. The $25 million guaranteed loan, the current status of that is that the port does intend to notify USDA that they will not be using the guaranteed loan. And there are some reasons for that stated in the blue box below. Part of it is, there is a conflict on the use of some of those loan funds for in-water work, as the original intent of that loan was for all upland improvements. Associated with that are, there's conflicting requirements between USDA and the bank that has been awarded that loan, which have made it difficult for the port to close on that. As well, also due to the fact that it is unknown where we are in terms of cargo throughput at the port, it may not be in the best interest of the port to maximize utilization of all $50 million in loans if the throughput is not reached, therefore putting the port at a risk, high-risk situation related to the loans. On here, you can see that the port has requested an extension on the closing of the $25 million direct loan until September 30th of 2012, and that is tied to primarily an agreement on the finalization, and finalization of the scope of work with the Maritime Administration. And as we said earlier, the EA document being completed in August would lead to a timeline where we can close based on an agreed scope of work in September 30th of 2012. And as mentioned earlier, the $14 million guaranteed direct loan for the crane acquisition was requested to be extended until March 2012, and we are still awaiting a response on both of those loans. Associated with the first $14 million loan, next slide, please, is the gantry crane acquisition. Currently, as a result of the legislation that was passed last year, the port is starting the process of the negotiations for the acquisition of the three polar cranes located at the port facility. Due to the nature of that procurement activity, we don't have a lot of information in terms of what we have yet, but that committee has been established, it has been reviewed, and they are currently working.
Yeah, the committee team has been meeting for the past couple of weeks already. I'm not sure if everybody here is familiar with all of the members that we have on there. We have Frank Shimizu from Ambrose, we have Greg Perez from Perez Brothers, we have Leo Leon Guerrero, who's a certified public accountant, we have Nick Captain, as well as a couple of members from internally within the Port Authority, including myself, and Port Authority Management, Ernie Candelotta, and John Sauter, assisting with, and the General Manager assisting with the crane negotiations. We just received, was it two Fridays ago, or Friday and a half ago, from the crane consultant from Casper, the assessment report, I think that the draft, the final assessment report, evaluation of the condition of the cranes. I think we formally submitted that to your office today and to the Speaker as required by statute, and we're proceeding with the negotiations. We set up an ambitious calendar amongst ourselves today with Mattson and Horizon, the owners of the cranes, and we hope to bang all of this stuff out within the next 30 days to figure out whether or not we're going to proceed with the procurement of those cranes. There's got to be a correction here, I think, on page, on this page, the final assessment report is actually transmitted today, not January 13th.
The last item in this slide. The, the last item in this slide, uh, the date is, should be today's date. Um, and just for review, um, the outline of how we got to the current, um, assessment of the polar cranes, the outline of that, uh, process is listed here. And if there are any questions on that, we can go over that later. The next slide brings us to our last item on the action item, uh, for the agenda today, which is the actions that we plan to undertake, uh, to help move the modernization program. In a follow-up to the, uh, various letters that have been provided, um, and sent to the Maritime Administration, provided by the Congresswoman's Office, uh, the Senator's Office, um, as well as the Port Users Group and the Port Authority, one of the first actions that the port will be undertaking is to, uh, work, uh, to establish a meeting with the Department of Defense Inspector General's Office, um, or JPO, and determine what is driving the proposed, uh, change in scope of work for the modernization program, moving the program, instead of an uplands program, to a replacement of the waterfront. Uh, the port has a desire to really understand what is the driving force behind that. As part of the balanced approach that was proposed and agreed upon by all the stakeholders, um, it is, you know, the belief of the port, um, and the users, as, and all stakeholders, that the balanced approach does take into consideration addressing the sustainability and the vulnerability of the bulkheads, um, and looking at what is the best use of the funding we have available now that will give us the best solution. So, this meeting with the DoDiG will help us to understand what is the driving force. Since they are the ones who have helped, um, look at the facility in the past year. Um, they had sent a team out here at the end of two thousand ten and beginning of two thousand eleven to look at the facilities around Guam, including the port. So, we want to gain a better understanding of what might be the driver behind the change in Merit's actions.
I think, uh, Senator, right, there's one, Matt, and as well as everybody else here in the room, as far as the, on the port side, is wondering at this point in time, as we've already articulated and reiterated on several occasions in conjunction with the legislature, with the governor, uh, with the Port Users Group, with the Congresswoman, that, uh, we'd like to see a balanced approach to the modernization plan, given the, uh, condition or given the, uh, fiscal realities, um, that have been, um, thrust upon us. So, we hope to get some clarity with regards to which way, um, either the Department of Defense Inspector General or Merit or any other entity within the federal government wants to go with, uh, respect to this fifty million dollars. We've, uh, made the request officially and that the, um, the coordination is u- underway right now between the, uh, Congresswoman's Office and, um, other, um, stakeholders locally here to try and set up the, uh, the need for the face-to-face to get some clarity here. So, I hope that helps out, um, for the presentation and the reps.
Okay, so you got to the first part. The meetings and, uh, with DoDiG.
So, there are a couple of the other items that, um, will help us finalize the implementation plan, um, and particularly tied to the funding that is currently made available. The port needs to make a review of a couple of different items, um, in coordination with any potential changes in the scope of work. Primarily, that's looking at what does the DoD money pay for? Um, and associated with that, what is the USDA loans paid for? In the original paradigm, uh, presented by USDA and what was approved in their environmental documentations for the program was an upland program. And if there are changes to the scope of work, um, we need to work closely with USDA to understand what are the potential, if any, implications to that USDA loan. Additionally, we also need to look at the crane procurement, um, and looking, uh, assuming that we do, um, maintain the fourteen million dollar loan and that the request for extension is approved, uh, we do need to look at the, uh, different mechanisms for, uh, re- recapturing the costs associated with taking on that debt, um, and finding the best, uh, means to, um, acquire throughput charges to pay for that loan. Additionally, if we do go through the process of acquiring the polar cranes, there will be, um, some retrofit and recurring operation and maintenance costs, and looking at how that will be financed to not put an increased burden on, uh, port finances. Associated with all of that is revenue projections, cash flow, and tariff adjustments. As everyone is aware, a tariff adjustment has been submitted to PUC, um, we're waiting for the final determination on that. But associated with that inc- change in tariff, whether it's the current tariff or the future tariff, we have to continue to look closely at the revenue projections of the port because those will have a direct implication on the cash flow and the subsequent ability for the port to take on additional debt, and making sure that their revenue projections, if there is a concern with their debt repayment, that that gets addressed quickly and efficiently to keep the port in a viable position. So, that concludes our presentation. Um, Senator will open it up for questions.
I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the, uh, panel. Well, actually, first of all, let me just kinda summarize, um, the, the presentation. It appears that, um, that at this point right now, there is not that mutual agreement between the Port Authority and the Maritime Administration, uh, of what projects are to be undertaken and funded with at least the fifty million dollars of Department of Defense, uh, grant that has been received. Is that correct? Is that a correct, uh, assessment?
You know, at this point, given that we've expressed collectively, between, again, yourselves and the legislature and the governor and the congressmen and the port users and the port, um, we've expressed our views on the balanced approach. We haven't heard anything.
Okay, but your federal counterpart has not, uh, basically has pulled back from the, from the original agreement in August and now is looking at a, at a targeted, uh, uh, targeted upgrade of take, basically taking the fifty million dollars of DoD money and targeting it towards the improvement of the waterfront. So, at this point, there's really kind of an impasse in that, um, there is not that mutual agreement for a project, project list to be undertaken.
Well, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know whether or not we can characterize it as mutual agreement or, you know, the silence is kind of deafening here, at least on our part.
Okay.
The only thing we've heard thus far with regards to what we've expressed collectively here is, uh, crickets.
Okay. The, the DoD funds, the fifty million dollars, when that was given to the Port Authority, what was the port's understanding of what, how that fifty million dollars was to be used for? Was it basically to be used for at the, at however the Maritime Administration deems it wants to use that fifty million? Or was it based on, um, the same list of projects that, uh, the port submitted with its, uh, ARA grant application for the same amount of money, uh, which included basically upland improvements?
I think it was all, um, I think the intention was to allow the port to have as much flexibility to utilize that money in the areas where they deemed it was necessary for the modernization plan. The wild card, or, well, the curveball that was thrown out, uh, our way here recently has been, of course, um, the assessment of the waterside facilities. So, we have not seen the final report yet from the DoDiG that, um, Merit had alluded to recently, which kind of, um, took everything off the table and, after we had had discussions with the implementation plan and the scope of work that we had all agreed upon, um, I think it was August.
Yes.
And, um, everything was, um, taken aback or the curveball was thrown at us, um, when there was reference to a DoDiG report that we have yet to, uh, formally see.
Regarding the-
Which, which expressed concerns about the, um, condition of the waterside.
Um, my understanding from your presentation regarding the status of the funds is that right now, the USDA loans are kind of on thin ice. Basically USDA loan, USDA wanted you to, to, uh, determine, um, what you were gonna do with the loans that have been approved and you have requested for an extension to that, and you're still kinda waiting. Then if that extension request is gonna be approved, otherwise it could get ob- deobligated.
I think, given the enormous funding pressures that have been taking place stateside with regards to buckets of money, uh, or limited buckets of money that are out there available, uh, from the federal entities, we've had these buckets of money sitting around for a while, in all fairness, to, uh, USDA. And, um, unfortunately, uh, we didn't move on it. And, you know, there, there may be a, a good side of it, us not, um, moving forward on the, um, on at least one of the loans, um, because had we started expending those monies and we didn't, we didn't have the additional, um, or we had to cover the debt service, we don't have the, uh, cargo volumes to cover that with the tariffs, then we would be on the hook. But we've, uh, managed, we, we articulated a letter to them on December twentieth, um, indicating what our views are. Offline and formally, they indicate to us that they totally understand, uh, they're supportive of our efforts to, uh, for the cranes, for the fourteen million dollars. They, uh, understand that we, uh, are waiting on the other, I, I think it's the direct loan, the twenty-five million dollars that we're waiting for Merit to, uh, finalize their assessment come September, August or September. So, there's, uh, uh, support in that regard. And, of course, they've also indicated to us that at the point in time when we do, uh, wanna come back in and resubmit an application for funding, when we deem it necessary and where we have the capacity to cover that debt service, they'll fully support us at a, probably at a lower rate.
Okay. That's, that's all the questions I have at this time. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, open it up. Do you have any questions, Mr. Vice Chair? Okay. Can I save you for the last?
Go ahead.
Senator Tyra?
I, I did. I, I know that the, uh, the bigger issue here is the apparent disconnect between Merit and the port. But you'd mentioned, um, some retrofitting that needs to be done to the polar cranes. I was under the impression that they were good to go and there was gonna be no need for any further retrofitting.
Uh, the goal, the, the goal for the acquisition of gantry cranes, um, is to acquire cranes that have a, a service life that would, um, match that of a, a loan that would be taken on. So, whether we're acqu- acquiring a used gantry crane or new gantry crane, we're trying to ensure that the port and the island of Guam is purchasing a crane that's going to last twenty years. And, you know, in order to do so, um, in order to make a determination between new versus, uh, used cranes, specifically the polar cranes, the inspection was un- uh, undertaken to determine what are the deficiencies or, um, changes to the cranes that need to be made to get them to current industry standards, uh, to ensure that they would, um, have an equivalent lifespan to that of a new crane. Um, so, there are, um, retrofit, uh, not necessarily, there are repairs, um, that need to be made, but there are, and there are some retrofits. And the combination of those two items, um, would provide the port, uh, gantry cranes that could still meet that lifespan. So, the goal is to try to ensure that we're, um, getting something that is the best use of the dollars, whether that be new or used. And in order to acquire used cranes, we need to make sure that the right investment is put in upfront to get them to, to last an appropriate lifespan.
Is there an estimate as to how much more that's going to cost us?
Um, not at this time.
Willian?
Yes.
Senator Anna?
What kind of retrofit are we talking about here? You know, we, we've just received the crane, uh, evaluation report from the, uh, crane consultants, um, Casper and Phillips. You, that was transmitted, uh, this afternoon over to, uh, the legislature. We're diving into, um, uh, that report as well. I think it's forty, forty or fifty odd pages. But it will, um, it gets into some very specific, detailed, technical, um, uh, aspects of the conditions of the cranes. I can't tell you off the top of my head right now what it is, but suffice to say, what we're doing is, we're gonna look at it, uh, based upon that evaluation. Uh, the crane negotiating team that is, is looking at it, um, they will be making an examination on determining, okay, how much money is gonna, uh, have to be expended, um, for retrofitting, repairing, uh, making sure that these cranes are in the condition that everybody expects it to be, and taking into account that we really only have fourteen million dollars, um, from the USDA loan. That will enable us to, A, buy the cranes, B, ensure we have the monies available to ensure that they're, um, fitted and repaired and up to the standards and have the lifespan that we expect them to have. Because I think you guys would be the first ones to turn around and say, what did you guys buy? A piece of junk? I, I can't answer the specific questions-
Yeah.
-on it, but, you know, you, you have the, uh, the opportunity to go ahead and look at the report. And at some point in time, uh, after we finish absorbing the report as well as, um, you do, I mean, we'll be able to try and answer the questions.
Okay, fine. Where are we at with the TriStar fuel line relocation? What, what talks have gone on so far with that?
There's a, TriStar has been sitting down, they've already sat down with, um, the port management and our attorney. They're, um, accelerated, um, testing, um, on their part, uh, testing schedule, what's called, I think it's pigging. Is, is, is that, that's correct? They're supposed to do it once, I believe, every five years. They've opted to accelerate it to check the condition of those fuel lines. Um, and from there, we're gonna make a determination on, um, how to proceed forward with either, A, relocation, B, retention of those, um, uh, lines in place. So, I think they're moving, when, when is that? February?
Uh, right now, uh, spot figuring with Mr. Danet. Uh, I know that they've been, uh, they are, they are having discussions with the, with the company that does that, that, uh, analysis. And, uh, again, uh, as the chairman said, the, 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 uh, the five years, uh, of regular inspection now is, is accelerated. So, we will have a, a, a trend, and we will see whether or not, uh, again, what the proper and appropriate, uh, action will be after that.
So, this testing then is something to determine whether the fuel line is safe to stay in place? Should relocation not be, uh, well, keeping it in place?
The results of the testing will help assist the port make a determination on whether or not the line should, uh, be removed.
Okay. So, then, if it comes to determination that the lines do need to be removed, who will be bearing the cost for that? I think those discussions are presently- Yeah, I, I think we'll save that for another, uh, for another briefing. That's a su- that's, that's almost a briefing in itself. It's, it's really, uh-
Actually, Senator, we would probably welcome a briefing on the status of leases, property leases, et cetera.
Sure.
On that, inclusive of that.
Yeah, but that, no, that's a very valid question, Senator.
Yeah, I'm just wondering because, you know, this is part of the modernization plan and if it's gonna stay in place or be relocated, I think would have an impact whether-
I understand.
Well, we, we can go ahead and discuss that later. Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it.
It's the vice speaker.
Thank you.
By the way, happy New Year to everyone.
It's not gonna do it. First, I, maybe an introduction. Again, uh, what is your position?
Matthew Smith, um, I represent the owner's agent engineer for the port.
And you're hired through?
Parsons Mengerhoff.
So, you are part of PB?
Yes.
And, um, with a general manager, a deputy general manager, a whole series of supervisors and forty or fifty new employees over the last year, we have no one from the port to speak for the port but the OE? I, I'm just trying to figure out-
Sure, sure we do. I mean, these people are, are welcome to speak.
Well, no, I'm just saying, the presentation-
They'd rather the presentation be done by them, like, certainly would, uh-
I, I'm just wondering why-
Trust me, I'm, I'm with you, Senator. I'd rather have our people who are there, the rank-and-file cadre, the professional cadre, the classified cadre, or the professional management to make the presentation. I don't dispute you.
I'm just wondering who made the decision to do that, because it bothered me, but we'll get past that. I just wanted to, to register my concern about that. Let's go to the funding- Let's go to the funding first. You talk about USDA, and though you didn't mention who the local guaranteed loan was, when you specifically spoke about the loan, you did mention them earlier. Are we going to close on the USDA loan on March 12th of this year? You mean for the one for the cranes? No, for the $25 million.
There's two $25 million pieces. There's the direct loan...
Right, there's the direct loan and there's the guaranteed loan. But there's a USDA loan on page 12. Correct? Am I reading it on the wrong page?
Yeah, it's right up there.
Okay. Right. Are we closing? I thought the statement was USDA obligated, and that we're working on closing, or at least we've asked for an extension to close on March, March of this year.
If you turn to page 13 of the presentation, there's, in the blue box, the current status. It outlines those, the three of the different loans. The guaranteed loan, the intent is for PAG is to inform the financial institution that they will not be proceeding with that loan. On the $25 million guaranteed loan from USDA, they've requested an extension until September 30th.
You mean the direct loan?
Sorry, the direct loan, until September 30th of 2012. And that is tied into the dates associated with Merit completing their EA. And then for the $14 million loan for the gantry crane acquisition, the request has been made to extend that closing until March 30th of 2012.
We articulated this Senator, or Vice Chairman Cruz, Vice Speaker Cruz, in a December 20th memo over to USDA on our request here.
No, I understand that. Because what I'm leading to is earlier, when we were talking, the presentation was being made on the protocol manual. I think, and I don't think I heard it incorrectly, that the protocol manual had been approved by USDA and ANZ. And if you want us to play the tape back, that's when you mentioned who the other loan lender was. What was that, did I hear that correctly? That the protocol manual was sent to USDA and ANZ for their initial approval before you sent it to Merit?
It was sent to all third parties at the same time.
And why would it have been sent to USDA and ANZ?
Because there are all stakeholders in the modernization program.
Do they have any money upfront right now that we would need to get their clearance before we even start with the protocol manual?
No, but that review was done in 2010, when the intent of the program was that all funds would be utilized for the program.
And we've now been at this for 14 months. We're going on 14 months, right? I'm trying to get this protocol manual done. Am I almost...
That's correct.
You're with PB?
Yes.
You helped produce this document?
That's correct.
Maybe you might explain something to me. And can I have somebody's help? If you can start from 2.1.6 and read that till the end, and explain what you meant when you prepared that document for us? Read it, no, read it aloud so that everybody understands what you're reading.
This is the report to legislature from August 3rd of 2009.
From who?
From Parsons Brinckerhoff. 2.1.6 Organizational Framework for Execution. The implementation plan was also based on the organizational framework that PAG has put into place for execution of the program. PAG has executed a memorandum of understanding with the Maritime Administration as the federal lead agency for dispersment of federal funding for use in the modernization.
Keep going. What does it say? It's the agency, the adjective before agency is what?
Federal lead?
You want to read the next paragraph?
U.S. Public Law 110417, Section 3512, designates the Maritime Administration as the lead federal agency for the Port of Guam Improvement Enterprise Program. It authorizes Merit to receive and disperse public appropriations and grants to provide the planning and design and construction of the projects for the Port of Guam to improve the facilities, relieve port congestion, and provide greater access to port facilities. It also permits Merit to administer supplementary PAG supplied funds or other sources of financing that may be necessary to carry out the program. Ports owner's agent engineer, PBI, OAE, will establish the capacity type and form of facilities to be included in the modernization program consistent with PAG financing and funding. Its objective in serving the local community, the Micronesian region, and the timeframe, timelines for implementation. The OAE will take responsibility in establishing functional, operational, performance, and engineering standards and benchmarks for PAG and use by Merit, its program management team. Merit and its PMT will be responsible for performing detailed engineering, procurement, construction, and delivery of facilities. It is anticipated that this would apply to most of the program components delivered over the next four years.
What does that tell us? Where did that language, especially the parts that were quoted, come from? I mean, in quotation? Would it come from that U.S. public law that's cited at the very beginning of the paragraph?
That's correct.
Is there any reason why you or the port should be surprised that Merit, DODIG, and Jigpo, none of them are responding to a Guam legislature's resolution or a port authority resolution or a letter from a delegate to the Congress that passed this law designating Merit as the lead agency?
Mr. Vice Speaker, I think I want to go ahead and exercise the chairman's prerogative here. I think what was not mentioned in that was the fact that the port belongs to Guam. The port belongs and is managed by the Port Authority of Guam. And they, at least in the memorandum of understanding that I saw, was that the port was to determine what improvements were going to be undertaken as opposed to some federal, outside federal agency coming in and saying, here's how we're going to fix your problems. It is our port.
I understand that. And with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask the PB representative to again read the difference between what Merit is supposed to do and what the port and the OEA is allowed to do? Please read it again.
U.S. Public Law 110417, Section 315, designates the Maritime Administration as the lead federal agency for the Port of Guam Improvement Enterprise Program. It authorizes Merit to receive and disperse public appropriations and grants to...
That's in quotations, isn't it?
Following section is in quotations. "To," in quotes, "provide for the planning, design, and construction of projects for the Port of Guam to improve facilities, relieve port congestion, and provide greater access to port facilities," end quotes. "It also permits Merit to administer supplementary PAG supplied funds or other sources of financing that may be necessary to carry out the program."
And the next paragraph goes into what you may do and what the port may do. Read that.
The port, using its owner's agent engineer, will establish the capacity type and form of facilities to be included in the modernization program consistent with PAG financing and funding. Its objectives in serving the local community, the Micronesian region, and the timelines for implementation. The OAE will take responsibility in establishing functional, operational, performance, and engineering standards and benchmarks for PAG and use by Merit and its program management team. Merit and its PMT will be responsible for performing detailed engineering, procurement, construction, and delivery of the facilities. It is anticipated that this would apply to most of the program components delivered over the next four years.
That English is completely different in my understanding, so I just wanted to make that point. Just so we get the history correct, am I correct that this whole, you guys started this whole process in August of 2007?
The master plan process started in 2007, that's correct.
And the legislature approved the master plan in 2008, correct? I mean, 2009? Two years ago?
That's correct.
Two weeks. To date, has anything happened besides you and Merit trying to figure out who's on top?
To date, there has been no construction started at the port.
How much money has been paid to your firm?
I don't have those numbers in front of me right now.
Mr. Chairman, how much money has been paid to the firm?
I don't have that.
Is it in excess of 20 million? Close to 20 million? 19?
No, it is not.
How much?
Our contract value is not even that large.
1.6.
1.6?
16.
16. And did I hear you correctly that you were questioning Merit on its expenditure of 55,000 of 60,000?
I'm not questioning any expenditures. We're just asking for the information related to their expenditures to ensure that the port's getting the best use of limited funds.
Then with all due respect, can I ask what was spent, what you did with the 16 million that's going to improve, that has shown any improvement at the port?
I can go into a list of the information we provided since 2007 for the port, but I don't know if that's necessarily what we want to go through right now.
I'm just going through what your presentation was in this thing. In the presentations to the legislature since you were PB, were you with them since 2007?
I have been, but I've only been engaged in the program since late 2009.
But you're... You've read the documents that you guys have sent to us in previous times?
Yes, I have.
And the organizational chart that's made reference to there and puts who on top?
The port and owner's agent engineer.
With who in charge of all the other processes?
I'm not sure you can discern that from this organizational chart. This was further developed in the protocol manual.
And who has interpreted the law from the U.S. law as to what is supposed to be done? Is the protocol manual in compliance or consistent with U.S. law?
The protocol manual actually was developed in conjunction with the Maritime Administration in a working session in Guam in 2010, held at the Sheridan. And that was a collaborative effort between all stakeholders, including USDA, ANZ, Maritime Administration, the port.
On the balanced approach letters, to date, the last correspondence that were sent to them was in November 18th from the Congresswoman, is that correct?
The last correspondence locally?
Yes.
Yeah?
And there's been no response from them since?
No. As a matter of fact, interesting, yesterday, yesterday morning, I received a mail from the Merit representative here asking to impart information to the legislature in anticipation of this evening's informational briefing. And I replied back that I think perhaps that you guys should directly acknowledge receipt of all of the letters, expressions made by the legislature via their resolution directly over to the legislature to give them your view on the balanced approach and whatever you wanted to impart for the informational briefing. I did not want any of the information, well, I did not want to have to answer for any of their information because I don't feel like I should answer for any of their information. And I wouldn't want to take any of their information out of context if I was compelled to respond.
Since the very beginning, when, in 2007, when comments were being asked about the port and some of the issues at the port. Can I have, can I borrow you again? This is the 2007 document. I think you can look at it and see that it's yours. And give me back mine, the other one. The section that I provided to you, what's that entitled?
Facility Constraints.
And what's listed as the second facility constraint?
Warves and poor condition.
Is that, are those constraints in alphabetical order?
No, but as you indicated earlier, this is from the 2007, 2008 master plan. Subsequent to that, in 2010, the port conducted a complete underwater investigation of all their facilities to determine what investments would be required as part of the modernization and determine that the conditions are such that limited investment due to the fact that dredging would not be occurring could be undertaken to preserve the facility.
Are you familiar with the document, the master plan that the legislature approved?
Yes.
Can you give that to him? Is that the master plan that the legislature approved?
Yes, and again, the, when the berth replacement program...
I understand, just let's finish. What is listed in that page that I've shown you?
Warves and poor condition.
And where do you find on that, is that in alphabetical order?
No.
How far down do you find the upland issues that you guys are concerned about in the lights?
In 2007, it was one master plan program, which included both waterfront and upland facilities, and was not a segregated program. Subsequent to the USDA award of funds, the program was split into a Phase 1A and Phase 1B. This is actually listed based on what is alphabetical, berths, and then container yards. In 2007 and 2008, it was one program.
And what did the legislature approve? Is that the plan that we were given and that we approved?
The master plan was approved in whole, including the waterfront stabilization.
Right. Has the legislature been asked to approve any of the amendments? Or have you just sent us updates?
The components have been presented on several different occasions.
Have we taken a vote on approving any of the updates?
Is that a requirement? Is that a statutory legislative requirement?
Did we not approve that? How are you going to be making the amendments without...
Can I ask you this? Is there a statutory requirement for the port authority to come back to the legislature each and every time there's a modification on the plan? That was discussed, that was collaborated upon between the port authority management and staff, between the engineers, between the, between the port users?
I would think so. Why are you coming back to us on the polar cranes? You're having to, if we didn't have to approve that...
We came back to, that's a separate issue on the polar cranes.
Forget the polar cranes. You asked us to approve this in 2009. We approved this document. We've received this update in 2000 later, and this update. But we've not had another vote to change what we approved on what the plan was going to be. Has there been a subsequent approval of, when you tell, you forget. Some people have gone to jail for loans that they took out, that they said they were going to do certain things and they didn't do it. This loan and this approval was for this master plan. We've not been asked to approve a separate one. We may have passed a resolution to say we want a, a balanced approach, but there's no public law attached to it.
Senator, I'm not saying that I'm... Senator, I'm not saying that I'm adverse to coming back to the legislature. Anybody here is adverse to coming back to the legislature? Seeking your approval, seeking your imprimatur. If you got, if you want us to do that, we certainly can do that. There's no issue with that. However, again, everything's been recalibrated in all the discussions, the, the funding streams have diminished. So everybody has decided, okay, let's get everybody back to the table, let's reset this whole modernization plan. It may not have been the same one that was envisioned in 2007 or 2009 when the legislature ultimately approved it. But the salient provisions in there, whether it be the water site improvements or the uplands improvements, those are contained in there in a whittled down fashion, if you will. Simply because we don't have the, the big buckets on it.
I, I understand that, and I'm just saying, when you, when you came in and you said that we were going to have 100 million and this is what we were going to do, that's one thing. Well, if you're going to scale it back, then you should fastest to approve it. A resolution is not the same thing as a public law.
Thank you, I'm going to go ahead and ask some questions. First of all, with regards to the changes that have occurred with the master plan, have any new project components been inserted into the master plan?
You mean that are strikingly dissimilar from this 2009 approval?
Yes. Or is the change basically that we took a project in Phase 1B and bumped it up to Phase 1A based on more information being available? So have there been any new components?
I don't know, you know, to my knowledge, I don't think that there's anything stark.
So no substantive changes have been made to the master plan in terms of projects to be undertaken?
That's correct, the primary goals of maintaining the facilities and increasing through capacity are the main goals.
Now, you what were, what were some of the significant factors that caused the port to have to modify or scale back projects? Maybe, maybe name two, two significant factors.
Yeah.
Okay, please speak, Mike.
The adapted program management approach being implemented by the Department of Defense with regard to the military buildup of Guam.
In other words, in other words, what you just said is that the military buildup got pushed back.
Yes, sir.
And so as a result, the volume of cargo that was initially, was the underlying assumption no longer held true, true, true?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what was the second factor, second significant factor?
The second significant factor is funding.
Funding was a recalculation of the cost of projects also a significant factor?
Yes, and the delay, as with any construction project, the further it gets pushed out, the larger the cost becomes due to escalation and other factors. And that became a driving force in the scaling back of the, each individual item within the program.
So as an example, at the front end, given the information that you had at the time, PB, as the owner's agent engineer, estimated, given the information that it had, that for 100 million dollars, it could probably undertake 10 different projects. But with more information that was made available when the, the design came to a greater degree of completion, then you could more precisely estimate the cost. It was found that maybe then you could only actually accomplish maybe seven of the projects. So that, did that, did that contribute to the modification?
That's correct, as, as the master plan developed and more detailed site investigations of specific utilities, specific facilities and other unforeseen conditions were uncovered, the cost for certain items increased above others. You know, allowing, forcing the port into a prioritization based on available funding.
Okay, so, so regardless, so then with respect to any changes or modifications in the master plan, you, you've just stated there are no new projects that were not considered in the original document that was approved by the legislature. There was no new doc, projects that were inserted?
The only new item was the F5 damage, which was not a foreseen condition.
Yeah, but that project was in Phase 1-
Yeah, but that's still generally under wars and poor condition. But to the extent and degree, we didn't know at that point in time.
Can you explain what's the, what's the debate between this facility constraint with respect to the warfs now? Apparently, the port's owner, agent, engineer had a, I guess, had a certain approach as to how to address the deficiencies at the waterfront. And MARAD, Maritime Administration, had its own ideas as to how to address those deficiencies. Can you explain that a little bit? What, what are the contrasts?
It's actually, right now, in terms of the approach of how to repair it, a PB conducted a series of geotechnical investigations with fieldwork going out, taking soil samples to determine what is out there. How does that interact with the current bulkhead? Looking at that in coordination with a very detailed underwater survey of the actual facilities, we determined, based on the material properties of, for instance, the concrete and the steel, in combination with that of the existing soil conditions, what was the current maximum capacity without dredging of the bulkheads, which allowed us to make a determination on what can be done to preserve the bulkhead and to stabilize everything to allow for funding to be found over the next 20 years. So the approach that PB took was a, you know, sustainability approach in terms of keeping the waterfront operational until the funds required for a full bulkhead replacement can be found in the future. The approach that has been indicated by MARAD at this point-
Before you go to the MARAD approach, what was the cost estimate for the PB approach to basically provide extension of the service life?
It's 12 million and it's two projects.
Okay, all right.
The approach recommended by the Maritime Administration took a more conservative, immediate approach to that solution. And basically, from the DODIG report, which again, we have not seen the full report on, assumed that a full bulkhead replacement would be required. They did that without going through the detailed investigations that were completed by PB. And they have recently brought on a risk assessment team as well as a geotechnical team to go through all of the data to determine whether they're in agreement with the approach presented by PB. But their approach, as presented to the port, is a partial replacement of the bulkhead, essentially leaving a offset of the bulkhead in, instead of being a straight line from F3 all the way across to F6, you would have a jagged waterfront. And I, I don't remember the exact cost, but I believe they were over 50 million dollars just for that partial bulkhead replacement. And they did present a bulk, incomplete bulkhead replacement from F4, F5 and F6, and I believe that was over 90 million dollars.
So, so the MARAD approach would have basically just consumed the entire 50 million dollar grant that was made available by the Department of Defense?
That's correct.
Leaving nothing for upland improvements?
And Senator, the thing for, for that is, for only a partial, a portion of the F4 to F6, it's basically a portion of only maybe F4. So it's not even the whole F4 for the 50 million.
So the difference between the two approaches is basically, I guess, a a, a, a construction that would extend the service life of the waterfront for another 20 years, but leaving enough funds available for upland improvements in contrast to an approach being proposed by MARAD to basically target the entire 50 million just at the waterfront.
That's correct.
For the record, my name is Mike Benito, I'm a member of the, the port board. One of the things that Chairman said that needs to be clear is, is true, MARAD's silence has been deafening, but I have had conversations with them and also prior to, to Brian Marney leaving. One of the things that needs to be cleared up is that what MARAD is doing today with the seismic analysis is based on what PB is proposing. They've made that very clear. They want to know what the, basically, they want to assess that work. Now, it's important that they do that, and the reason why MARAD has to be part of this is because the USDA funds can't take care of water work, anything in water. So if the DOD funds, if they were going to do the, if we were going to work on what PB is proposing, which is what we are presenting to them with the balanced approach, that money's going to have to come from the DOD 50 million dollars. That's why we need to make sure we maintain the USDA funds, the additional 25 million dollars, so we can do, one, the, the structural repairs to make sure we get the 15 to 20 year additional useful life. And then in, in addition to that, to complete the SOW that was agreed upon by all parties. Senator Cruz, to your point with regards to port modernization, I just want to make it really clear, and, and Senator, you cleared it up. You got to remember, the port modernization was approved, which was 1A and 1B, which was all inclusive. Even the extension beyond what we are doing today, extending the, extending the warp. What we have in the SOW is just components that were within that port modernization plan. Nothing has changed, it's just what we can do with the money that we have. So I don't know, and, and another thing is, we have had numerous-
I, I understand that, Mr. Benito. All I was trying to point out was when we, when those documents were presented to us for approval, on the constraints, they listed the berths as like the number two item on both listing, okay? And I purposely asked if it was in alphabetical order to see whether or not B, B being before U might have been the, made the difference, but it's not.
Well, what we had done-
So I'm just, I'm just trying to make it clear, and I know that the Chairman's trying to make it look, I'm just, did you, when did you guys decide on the, on the balanced approach?
The balanced approach has been based on the meetings that we have had. We had some meetings with, with the Senator and I believe you were there as well.
But I'm just saying, what was the date? Because it's, it's making it sound like we're doing this because we, we don't have the additional 50 million. But in the presentation you guys just made today, you're still talking about the 50 mil, the additional 50 million from USDA and the ANZ, and you're still, you still haven't told either one of them that you're not going to take the loan.
Well, you got to understand, you, you're correct. But the 50 million dollars is based on being responsible and being able to pay for that 50 million dollar loan. And at this point, based on the projections that we have today, we can't, we cannot pay for that additional 50 million dollar loan. So it's important-
There's only one loan, right? The, the first 50 million is the grant.
The 50 million dollar grant, Department of Defense grant, that's one thing. We don't have to worry about paying that back. That is why, when we had the meetings in the, in the Governor's complex, is that's why we put our emphasis on determining what components of the port modernization plan can fall within that 50 million dollars so that we can move forward and do in those jobs right now. So we can spend the DOD monies today. It's not monies that we need to, we need to pay back. It's not monies that we have to worry about future projections in terms of cargo and revenue. It was money that we had and that we need to spend. So that's where we are.
When did we get those monies?
The 50 million dollars is-
September 2010.
So in 15 months, we haven't spent any of it yet?
Absolutely not, we have not, and, and the thing is, a lot of things have changed since, in, in that 15 months. A lot of things have changed. If we would have, have used the projections that we were thinking back 15 months ago, we would have been needy in containers in the next few months. But that's not the case. And if we would have borrowed money based on that thought process, how are we going to pay for it?
I didn't pay the 16 million dollars for this plan that I met protection.
You're absolutely right. And, but you know, to PB's defense, they have done some good work for us. So I'm not going to here to, to, to tear up PB. I think you, we're here to explain where we are today. Now, with MARAD, you know, we've made it very clear, and we thank you, the legislature, for the resolution that was placed. We thank the Congresswoman, we thank the Governor, we thank the Port Users Group. We put together that packet, we told them what we were looking forward to, the balanced approach. And that's the, that is the, that is how we are moving forward.
Have you asked your legal counsel whether or not a resolution would be sufficient or whether or not a request of the Congresswoman to amend the law that provided for the grant might be more appropriate? Because it's pretty clear from the law what, who's in charge, what they're able to do and what you're able to do. You want to change that. It's not going to be by our resolution, by her letter, or your resolution. It's going to have to be amendment of the law.
You know, I just want to make it clear, you know, when we did that SOW and implementation, scope of work, that was in conjunction with MARAD. Our communication with MARAD is that they agree with that scope of work, with that implementation plan. The WARP and the integrity of that WARP was brought to, you know, to our attention because of a DODIG report. So they are addressing that at this point.
Have you seen this DODIG report?
I have not seen the DODIG report, and we, and actually, that was made clear.
But the reason why I brought out the 2007 is to show that in 2007, even that group saw the port, the, the berths problems as the top issue. Constraints.
And, okay, but we are addressing that as we speak, and that's one of the-
I, I understand, but I'm just saying, berth, the berth issue has been on the list of constraints in 2007 and 2009 when it was brought to us.
But the list, it was a constraint, but so was not having enough space for break bulk. So was not having a-
Mr. Chairman, if you think that's not priority, then it should be in-
No, I'm saying, I'm asking whether or not this is indicated on what you guys had passed back in 2009 in list of priority, not alphabetical, not chronological, is this a prioritization?
And that's why I asked if it was alphabetical, because if it wasn't, then I would assume that it is by priority of what is more important to take care of. If it was alphabetical, I could see it, but then if it's not, then I would have to assume that it was in order of importance.
Could you maybe clarify if, if those projects were listed in the order of priority, was that order of priority based on the underlying assumptions then at the time that this was submitted? In other words, at, back in 2007, if that was the order of priority, the priority was to address capacity issues, to be able to receive the tenfold increase in containers? And that as a result of that, sustainability, such as putting additional, you know, strengthening the warfs, really had to, I, I guess the assessment was made that, that it's not going to fall into the water, but that the immediate need was to address capacity issues. Is, is, was that a, is that a correct assessment? And today, because the military buildup has been pushed back, capacity issues are not as foremost as it was back in 2007 when everybody was talking about this enormous military buildup that was going to take place.
That's correct, Senator, and the capacity issues associated with the bulkhead also were tied to if the anticipated forecasts of cargo was seen, that larger vessels would need to call Guam and therefore that would have an additional impact on the port bulkheads because you cannot just go and dredge the current, in front of the current bulkhead without it collapsing. It's just not, it's not designed for deeper dredge depth. So it was a capacity-driven approach at that time for one entire program.
I hope I don't need to ask the question that I asked at one of the first hearings that you guys had. I, I've hoped that in the interim time that you guys have all read the, the master plan that you presented to us, that we approved?
After the last review, we did. Let me make something real clear as well with the SOW, that was the scope of work that we agreed upon. You know, we took the components of it and we made sure those were the most important things that we, we needed to address today. And we did that even in conjunction, as you know, because you were in those meetings with the Port Users Group as well. And a lot of that had to do just what we were doing with that scope of work. The knocking down the buildings, having the break bulk area, having an additional paved area, was also to take care of what is considered organic growth for the, for the, for, at that time, Matson and Horizon and now Matson. So again, the work that we're doing today is, is for military buildup, no doubt, but it's also for the organic growth that we already have as well, and, and we're in much need of. need of.
In fact, your, the 50 million dollars that the port was initially planning on borrowing from USDA was really driven by the estimate by the consultants. That was what it was going to take to upgrade the port to be able to address the organic growth demands.
But your estimate, your estimate at that time was actually 190, wasn't it?
That was for Phase 1A and Phase 1B. That was in separate, not including what was called F7 at that time, but yes, for Phase 1A and Phase 1B in 2007 was 190 million dollars.
So even the 100 was not going to be sufficient, it would only be half?
That was based on a different midyear of construction than we're currently forecasting. So again, it's, it's tied to inflation, delays and other changing factors and costs related to construction.
In the master plan that was approved, was it made very clear that only the first 100 million dollars of Phase 1A was, was, funds have actually been identified? Funding for Phase 1B was really, at that time, to be identified?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any other senators, any other questions? The vice speaker?
We're never going to agree on this or the crane, so there's no sense in my upsetting myself any further.
Well, I, I, you know, I-
Senator Tyer was correct in the question. Why would you buy a used crane that you're going to need to retrofit? And you're even in your own presentation says you're concerned about the O and M, the operation and maintenance cost.
If you brought, if you bought a brand new crane, would you still have to be concerned about O and M costs?
Yes. And what would the difference in cost be?
Ooh, I think the last quote that we got-
No, the difference in O and M on, on a new one as opposed to an old one.
You're still going to have to pump in money, see, even though you buy something new doesn't say that, oh, you could just leave it out there, not polish it, not maintain it and stuff like that.
I'm hoping this isn't the, the position of the administration of, if it's not money, it's not money. It's, it is. Well, how much would O and M for a used crane be as compared to the O and M of a brand new crane? And if they haven't done the, the analysis for you, then you should fire them.
We have the analysis being, we have the analysis being-
What's the cost difference?
We have the analysis being conducted right now, based upon the condition of the cranes that were just evaluated by Casper. The analysis is being done by our financial people with the CPA and taken into account the O and M we do presently for the existing equipment.
But don't say that just because it's going to be O and M, of course it's going to be always O and M. Hopefully, there's going to be regular, check whatever you have to do to keep it up so it doesn't completely fall apart like we always do.
That's correct.
So that, that's what I'm saying, but, but the cost is going to be different, so don't try to just say, well, it's, I'm going to have to spend a million as opposed to 5 million dollars in, in O and M.
All right, do you have any final comments to make? Okay. Given that there are still some substantive issues remaining to be resolved, such as what projects are going to be undertaken, the status of the funding, I'm going to recess this briefing and, and, and tentatively will be resumed in another 30 days to see what progress we've made with respect to the port modernization program. Have any final words, Mr. Chairman?
No, I thank you very much for the opportunity to field more questions.
And thank you for preparing the presentation this evening. It is now 7:35 and this information briefing is now recessed.